Okay, I'll take the roll.
Just a minute, I lost one thing. I need to get here a minute if you bear with me. Thank you very much. Of August 13th, 2020. If you would call, roll call please.
Bont.
Here.
Baugh.
Here.
Glassity.
Here.
We have a quorum. Approval of the agenda?
Thank you. Second on there is agenda changes. I don't know if we need to make any changes, any Jim or Stephanie or myself?
I think the agenda is fine.
Stephanie?
No, no.
I know you just came on board on this one.
No problem. No, I have no changes.
I think it's fine also. So you do need a roll call on that Cindy?
We need a roll call on everything when we're doing Zoom.
Yeah, I know.
Glassity?
Yes, approved.
Baugh?
Approved.
Bont?
Approved.
Motion carries. And then we're on to the minutes.
Approval of the minutes of April 30th, 2020. Stephanie, you weren't here, so you wouldn't be able to, well, we'll have to figure that when I'll vote on it anyway. But Cindy, I think there are some things on there that we need to take a look at, okay?
Okay.
Down there in the, okay, go on down where he has the motion was made by Bont, that's me. I do not see any notes why we accepted any of the variances. It's blank.
I gotcha.
And I, that has, we have to have something in there.
Yep.
We've got to have details.
The other, the other thing I'd like to suggest is that we somehow need to document how we came up with the average grade for that house.
Yes.
Something that we seldom do as a committee. And number one, it would help us if we, if we ever had to defend this, but number two, it becomes precedent for those who succeed us for how to determine the average grade.
Yeah, it's quite detailed in the ordinance, so I have all that information. Just somehow it didn't get put in the minutes because I probably didn't hear the minutes.
Yes, so Cindy, on this particular thing, I, we have to table the approval of the minutes to be updated and changed.
That's perfect for me. I can, that's perfectly acceptable.
Jim and Stephanie, are you with me on that?
I am.
I'm in agree, I'm in agreement.
So on that particular thing, approval of minutes, it has been tabled to complete the issues that we need as of the April 30th on the height variances, which was on that 1034 Holland Street application.
Perfect. That was right at the start of COVID business and right at the start.
I hear you. I hear you.
Well, so we'll table that to the next meeting?
Yes, and so.
I'll call the roll.
What, what is it that we're approving or accepting?
We are, the motion is to table.
Okay.
Jim, the motion, you have to make a motion and if you table this to complete the information needed on that, the minutes of April 30th.
All right, I move that we table the approval of the minutes from the April 30th meeting.
Stephanie?
Yes, I approve.
Okay, so you do need a roll call on that again.
I do. Baugh?
Yes.
Glassity?
Yes.
Bont?
Yes.
Minutes are tabled.
Sorry about that Cindy, but.
Perfectly okay. That's why I give you the minutes.
Yep, we need, we need to have that completed. The next thing on the agenda is new business, which is the 295 Park Street application V 2002 lot 57 55000100, the Plow Gregory, our application for variance.
Okay, be real. I can give you a real quick, brief overview on that.
Okay.
This house is close to being underwater because of the high lake glo, or the high water levels. And the applicant is proposing to lift the house in its exact same location. It is non-conforming for a couple of reasons. It encroaches into the side yard and it encroaches into the rear yard a little bit. So moving it closer to the garage could be problematic, keeping the 10-foot separation between the house and the garage. But I'm going to let the architect go ahead and make that presentation because he's a very accomplished architect and he knows exactly what he's, what he's doing. I have full confidence in him.
Okay Cindy, so we are moving on to presentation by the applicant and if the applicant would give me his name and location before he puts the information into the system. Thank you.
My name is Gregory Richard Plow, but the only time I get called Gregory was when my mother was pissed off at me, so I prefer Greg.
Greg.
And my address is 295 Park Street in Sagatuck.
Thank you Greg.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
I think Chuck is ready to make the presentation or Charles, he is the architect and he knows all the technical details and has some documents he wants to share with you.
Okay.
Be patient with us because we don't meet by Zoom. It's EBA very often. So just be patient with us. We'll get through it and if you want to go ahead, Charles, we'll get moving on that.
Charles, if you would state your name and where you're from?
It's Charles K Carlson and my mailbox is PO Box 111 Douglas, Michigan. What else do you need?
No, that's it. That's good Chuck.
All right, all right, great. So now should I share the screen? Is that?
Yes.
All right, so what I'm going to do first is I'm going to open up the presentation.
Okay.
All right. Just kind of walk you through the drawings that were prepared for this application. All right, so this is Park Street here. This is the site. This is Kalamazoo Lake, so just kind of like a little bit of a, like this is where it's located. Oh, that goes quick. So this here, this is a site plan. And there's an existing parking area here. There is an existing building which is way above the floodplain. And we don't plan to do anything with this building. We want to just keep it where it is. This green area around here is the required setbacks. And then this yellow area here is the building footprint, the allowable building footprint. So this is where the existing houses that we're talking about. And as you can see, it's slightly out of the setback, the side setback. There's the front, the waterside setback, which is way out of the, out of the area here. So it's this corner of the house. I have a new deck. We're showing a new deck here, but we're really not applying for a new deck at this point. I'm just showing it. The new deck will be designed so that it's will be less than 24 inches, 24 inches or less off of the grade. So it can comply with, with the, with the allowable setback area or yeah, area. This is an existing house here, an existing house here and their dock comes out. So this is the area that we're talking about. This is the existing conditions. And I got some photographs to back this up. You can see that this, this is the existing garage, which is way above the, the site plan. This is the top, right along here is the top of the parking area. And so the house sits kind of below that point and I'll show you some backings there. So this is a elevation from the lakeside. Oh wait, this is showing the house set up, I'm sorry. Because this red line here is the floodplain and right now the house is way down by the floodplain. We want to lift it up. You know, two and a half to three feet above the floodplain because right now it's this way down here. And then this is the side elevation from the north that kind of shows the house setting up higher than, than, than the floodplain by about two, two feet six inches. So when we, when we raise this up, you know, we're, we're still, oh gosh. You know, the, the allowable building height is this 28 feet, I believe, or if we take halfway up the, up the slope of the roof, we're all at 14.6. So we're not really, you know, being out of conforming, not conforming when we raise the house up. Um, this is just some elevation, some perspectives of what it looks like. There's the floodplain right here. This is showing the house raised up and then this is from the road. This is Park Street here and this is showing the house raised up. We'll be, we'll do a little catwalk here or whatever to get into the house because I so show some existing conditions. This is the house now. This is the parking lot here. We have to step down into the house, so we want to raise it up kind of equal with the parking lot or maybe a little bit higher. I mean, I actually think we're going six inches higher than this area here. Because I measured this to be two feet and we want to go up two feet six. This is just some views, like these are the two trees that we want to try to save during this whole process. This is an existing condition with, with some sandbags trying to hold back the water there. So that's kind of like the presentation that we've done. Greg, do you want to pipe in on anything?
No, that it's just our concern about the building being flooded and eventually destroyed. We're hoping to raise it up and remodel it to make it a beautiful continuing addition to the city. We bought it several years ago with the intention of improving it. We put in a new existing, a new replacement seawall and dock. All new metal roof on the building and, and the new roof on the garage. And we want to continue the renovations and improvements if possible, but we're at risk of it being flooded and destroyed. We now have currently placed 353 sandbags in front of that piece of property. And we're concerned that unless we do something in the near future, we're at risk of having to be destroyed. That's all I have to say at this time.
Okay, thank you very much Chuck and Greg. Appreciate that. Anything else you need to add? No?
No, not from my.
All right, we'll get back to you if we have questions on all of this. But participants, and I don't think there's any, is anybody Cindy or Kirk online participants that may want to make comments or anything else from anybody that's there?
No, we don't have any, no one from the public has joined.
We did get four letters in support of the.
Yeah, I saw that.
And they were from all the adjoining property owners.
Yes. Do we need to read all those?
I hope not because I didn't bring them with me.
Well.
They were in the.
They're all in support. They're very smart.
Yeah, they're in there.
They're in the public packet online.
Yeah, the the, the one letter in there, any that okay, I'm, I have all those in front of me. I'm just zipping through them if you just bear with me here a little bit.
If you pause the picture right there, I believe it's the letter you're going to refer to, Richard, from the neighbor just beyond the A-frame there. And they are at the same basic level. Well, their building is higher, but their ground level is at the same level as ours. And you can see at the far end in between us and them, we've had a shared joint flooding area. Their letter requests that in particular, that if raising the building, we do not change the level of the landscaping below so that we don't end up flooding our waters onto their property. And that's, we're in complete agreement. In fact, when we discussed it, that was the issue I raised. I said, please mention in the letter so that we have, everyone has a clear understanding. We just want, they want to keep the property so we're not, our elevation of the land doesn't increase to run any floodwaters onto their property.
Yeah, I see that and okay. Jim, do you have any comments on?
I have.
We can move on to ours, but any other comments you want to ask the applicant at this time?
Yes. If you raise it up two foot six and keep the grade the same, your house is going to become an island, isn't it?
We would have decking in front of it and then we would have decorative plants around it. It would be either on piers or raised foundation. I don't believe it would become an island. We're basically raising it up to the existing street level, which now is, it falls below. So the presentation would be a building that fits the environment.
Well, your, your picture shows your deck going out to the seawall and, and basically extending the seawall vertically in the area where the deck is. Is that the intent?
Yes.
Is it allowed to increase the seawall height?
That is a question for the Eagle or DEQ?
There was an existing, I hopefully Chuck can bring up that picture. There was an existing deck there that was above the seawall. When we purchased the property, we removed the deck, James, when we put, installed the new seawall because we had to put the anchoring piers back further underneath where the deck was. Our intention has always been to replace that deck exactly where it was and there are, there are the neighbors on the left side have the same situation where the deck is in fact above. Let's see, if you bring, okay, there's the deck that was there. He's just brought up the picture, James, of the, the deck that was, and it was built above the existing seawall.
Their deck is open. Is yours intended to be open like that?
Yes, yes, with drainage down to ground level. Yes.
Just to be very clear, Jim, the, the deck is not part of this application. The urgency is to get that house lifted up out of the water.
But Cindy, I, I see that. I understand that part of it, but they're assuming that if we give them this approval to raise the existing house above sea level or above the
Blood level.
The highest level of the water there on the lake, then they are assuming they can put that deck back in, correct?
No, that's not part of the application and not part of the motion.
And would a new variance be required to install the deck or is that legal?
I would have to see the application for that, but it will be either conforming with our new standards or a new application for a variance.
I, I do have one question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, great, great. Okay, so you did hit on the question I had, but I'm not sure I got the answer and that is you are deciding whether you're going to raise the house onto piers or onto a raised foundation. Are, do we need to know which one you have decided? It sounded like you hadn't decided yet.
We have not decided based on two things. One, we can't fully identify what existing foundation exists under the A-frame. We just think it's a concrete slab. If the concrete slab is in great shape, we intend to just build onto that. If the concrete slab is not in great shape and we need to remove it, then we're going to either put the building on piers and/or a replacement slab. So we just haven't determined that yet until we see the condition of the slab when we raise up the building.
Okay.
All right, very good, Stephanie.
The house is getting.
Go ahead, Jim.
You, it does include a new foundation. That's what your application said.
Yes.
Okay.
But if the, well, I mean, we need to build up 2.2 feet six inches. We need to build a cement blocks to build around that or piers to set on the existing foundation. If the existing foundation is fine as it is, we will leave that and build on top of it, but under no conditions do we want a a basic slab that's in bad shape and then try to put, build something on top of it. It, it would just be not a smart thing to do to not replace that and have it right before we did anything above it.
Well, does the code allow you to build on a slab with no real footings?
Yes.
That's something we would have to determine and that's, you know, yeah, what we want to do is get approval to raise up the house. With, I mean, or perimeter, foundation. My, my fear is like, once we dig six inches down, we're going to hit water. So I think this is going to have to be somewhat of a civil engineer. You know, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that we, you know, if we have approval to move, move the house up then we can feel confident moving forward with, you know, some professional recommendations. Once, once we have, once we take a look at the, the situation, but we have to raise up the house to do that.
But, but Chuck, question for you. Wouldn't you have discussed that with an engineer before you wanted to even think about raising the house?
Well, I mean, I, I feel confident enough. I mean, it's, you know, that that we can raise the house up. It's, it's just what, what is going to be the best system?
Right.
Yeah, Rich, the, the, the question is about raising the house, not what kind of foundation it's going to sit on. That's, that's going to be determined by the building inspector and the engineer. And we don't really have any say over that. Can you raise it? Yes. Can you not? No. What kind of foundation it is, it's going to be determined by the building inspector and the engineer.
And, and then, and the Eagle may have something to say about it too. I mean, they might want us to design some sort of a breakaway foundation so if it floods, you know, and I've, I've experienced that before where, you know, it's like, it's got, we have to design a foundation that's going to allow flooding into it.
Well, my concern was, is it a new foundation? Yes or no? And I think we've answered that question, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're asking any other comments on that because we need to then go into our own deliberation here. Any more comments Chuck or Greg you want to make before we?
None, none from mine. I think the proposal pretty well sums it all up.
Okay, so then at this time we will close that part of the presentation from the public and your application and we will now go into our deliberation of discussion on the four variances and standards of approval. So first of all, Jim and Stephanie, any questions you want to bring up between the three of us?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
Personally, I think the house should be moved so that it's more compliant. This, this house is varying on the front and the side. And if you measure according to the drawing we were given, the, the side property line is 81 feet four inches. And the house is 32 feet. If you take 32 feet away from 81 feet, you're left with 49 feet. And we need 50 feet for the combined front and rear variances. So the house could, could be moved towards Park Street and rotated ever so slightly so that there was no variance required for the side of the house. And that the variance required for either the front or the back would be basically one foot at one side of it tapering to something slightly larger on the other, but far less than we're being asked to approve here. And since this house gets a new foundation, it's being moved. This is basically, if we were asked to approve moving a house from another location to this location, we would certainly decline it. We would say, no, it has to meet the standards. I think in this case, a lesser relief might be, yeah, what, what you're showing there. It, it could go back and then it would be compliant on the front and the side and we'd have a much smaller variance requested for the streets, excuse me. It would be compliant on the lakeside and what I guess would be the north side of the property there. And it would have a much smaller relief required on the Park Street side of it.
Okay. Good, good suggestion for a lesser approval and trying to get back more into conformity.
So.
Because you're just taking the existing house, we're raising it, we're raising a non-conforming house just up to be another non-conforming house.
Yeah, and we're just, we're just locking this place in as non-conforming forever. We're not taking advantage of the opportunity here to improve the situation.
Correct. Stephanie, are you with us on that?
Yes, I have a question. In, in having the homeowner move the house, I know it sits below the front parking area in, in front of it. I went over this packet last week when I got it and I remember that. Is, would it require them to move any of the front dirt area? Would it disturb the grading that is in front of the house for you to have them move it? I mean, is that a big deal? Is it? I don't have the pictures in front of me. I, I went over the packet. I know the house. I've actually been there and at a garage sale and walked the property quite a bit and so I'm familiar with that, but I don't have the packet in front of me.
Well, to look, to help you answer that a little bit, they said they wanted to bring that house up to that existing level of that parking grade. That would mean.
That's right. You're right. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that means they have to tear up part of that parking lot area no matter what.
That's right. You're right. I'm sorry. I missed that. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the answer is to your question, Stephanie, is yes. They're going to have to excavate on both sides of this house to get the beams under it to raise it up.
Yeah.
If, if I was doing it, I would move the house completely off the lot and then build the foundation and set the house back down rather than jacking the house up six or eight or 10 feet or whatever is required to build the foundation under it.
Yeah.
So yeah, there's, there's going to be some disturbance there. But we've, we've got an opportunity to improve the situation here and I, I think we should ask the homeowners to take advantage of that and see if we can get it back in, closer to being in compliance.
Yeah, I, I like that thinking as well.
Right. Now, knowing that the applicant, all he asked for was to raise the house two feet six to get above that floodplain. So in doing something to try and meet our standards, we would have to take a look at making, how do you say this Jim, a lesser approval of something?
My, my take on it would be, yes, they can raise the house, but not where it is.
Mm-hmm.
And they're asking, basically, we'd, we'd have to grant a variance for both the side and the, and the lakeside, I guess.
And the lakeside. Absolutely.
So we could either grant those variances or I think we could grant lesser variances. But we'd have to know what it is they're asking for once they've made that. But we'd have to know what it is they're asking for once they've made that determination.
The, okay, the thing I also see here is that whole entire side of Kalamazoo Lake, all those houses are going to have issues. We have to be very concerned about setting a standard because the next house down, the next house down, the next house down is going to say, well, you gave them approval. We need approval. So keep that in mind as you, we look at our standards and what we want to do.
I, I guess, I, I know on the planning commission, you know, we've talked about this in the training for all of the ZBA and the planning commissioners. We, we are, we are interested in as much as possible helping bring a property back into performance once it's having renovation done to it or giving a variance or whatever else. So I, I, I guess I am intending to agree with this line of thinking as well.
Of what Jim was proposing?
I, I would suggest that we table this motion and ask the architect and the property owners to come back and tell us how they can bring it into compliance. And if they do so, how much of a variance is requested?
Chairman Bott?
Yes.
Each variance request is unique unto itself and is not based on precedents. And you don't have to table it. You can approve it with conditions that it could be moved so it complies with the front yard setback and the side yard setback. So you, you really don't have to table it. If the applicant's not happy with that, they can submit another application.
We, we could do that, but we don't know how much of a variance we're asking for on the street side in that case.
Well, if you move it.
It's just whatever it happens to be.
Setback, you know exactly what it would be.
Well, can we get that answer now?
Definitely. So.
Chuck, are you with us on what we're looking at? Well, I, I think, do you want to take this corner and put it over here?
No, we want to take the front corner down by the lake and move that back to the buildable area. And then. And then rotate that back corner so that the side setback is, is achieved.
Right, okay. So you want, yeah, so this goes up to here and then rotate, and then rotate the house a little bit?
Yeah.
I don't know if I can do that automatically.
Well, here, here the thing is, if you can't do it on the plan, Chuck, I, I understand that. You guys are good, good at all that stuff, but, okay, there you go. Here's the thing we're asking. If it is something that you and the applicant would go along with, like Stephanie is saying, to try and get something more up to standard and not have.
We might get our answer.
Ask for a variance on both of those.
That kind of gives you an idea.
So Chairman Bott, what I'm understanding is you want them to meet the riverside setback and grant a variance in the front yard setback and eliminate encroachment on the side yard.
Absolutely, Cindy. So what we're asking then would be a variance here on the street side is what we're looking at.
We're thinking it will be a small variance. It should be approximately one foot.
It's going to be one or two feet variance on that street side.
It will be more than that because the encroachment in the rear yard is 11 and a half feet. And to move that to the front yard where there's an area of about four feet, it would encroach like eight feet into the front yard setback.
Okay, well, let's see what it is.
I'm having a hard time.
And then I'm a little bit worried about how close the house will be to the garage. You need a 10-foot separation. And that's for various reasons, but mostly for fire access and fire separation.
Cindy, you wouldn't need fire separation between that garage and that house, the lake, is there?
The building inspector will require it.
Yeah, we, we would have to find out.
For that before.
Not, not from the fire code.
Well.
Hmm.
So, so it sounds to me like what we're trying to do is to shrink the number of variances we would have to grant. We aren't going to be able to erase the variance. Is that what we all are saying as you're?
Yeah, we'll have one variance instead of three.
Right. Yes, Cindy, that is correct.
You know, if we put this corner, you know, and you see the yellow line there. If we put it there, I mean, we're still go here, I mean, because you can see, well, here, maybe if I can do this. You can see that along here, it's still not compliant, even though this is on.
How far back do you have to move to make it compliant?
About three more feet. Well, no, about four foot six.
Okay. And what's your clearance to the garage?
I'm back. I'm back. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, Steph. Thank you for joining us today. I really appreciate it.
No problem.
About 10 foot six.
Okay, so we're good there. And how close are we to the street in the back?
Oh, about. I don't, yeah, it's hard for me to tell.
I wouldn't think you're going to be much of a difference.
Especially since it's not really a parking area. Parking's over by the garage or.
Right. I don't think it's much of a difference.
I mean, we're, we're, we're about eight feet. Now.
You're eight feet difference from where existing houses?
That pink line is, oh, no, I, existing, oh, an existing house. Yeah. That's about 19 feet forward.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and you got how much to the road?
About 27 feet from the road.
So we're still even further from the road than the garage is today.
Right. This is something we were trying to save.
Yeah.
Which means they'll, they'll be taken out.
Looks like.
And then your view from the. I mean, because I.
Getting what?
Well, you know, because I mean, there's like, I don't, I don't know if this is important. Maybe it's not, but we're really kind of narrowing any, any view of the water from the street is being reduced to 10 feet, where before it was a little bit more open.
The trees are right there and I walked across the other side there, Chuck, and looked that way. And it wouldn't make any difference anyway.
Yeah.
If you walk, if you walk across and look at the one guy's thing, he said it right now, it wouldn't change. I don't think it would change it anyway if you changed it.
Whether, whether the tree blocks your view or the house blocks your view, it's not much different.
No.
And there's nobody across the street whose view is going to be blocked either.
Nope. The house is way up on a hill, way over top of it.
I, I personally would see this as preferable to what we were being asked.
I know, Stephanie, you can't see it, can you, what he's doing?
No, I can't. I'm just going off the memory of what it was originally in the drawing.
What he did is he turned the house. How we looked at it clockwise or counterclockwise, whatever. But he brought the side yard in compliance and the front yard or the lakeside in compliance. The only one that would not be in compliance would be the street side, correct?
I think so, Cindy. Do you agree?
Cindy?
I, I think that's what you're getting at. We could do that as a condition of the application or we could table it to a special meeting because again, the urgency is to get it up out of the floodplain.
What was the variance that you ended up with on the street side then?
I, I think it was eight feet. Let's ask, let's ask Mr. Carlson. He probably knows.
Okay.
Um, we're asking for, well, it's, it's to the roof line, right? There's to the.
Setbacks are from the foundation.
Foundation.
All right, so we're asking for about a nine foot, seven and a half foot variance. And don't quote me on this because I might be drawing a line that's on an angle.
You'd have to draw a line from the northwest foundation line. That's the one that's spinning. It's the one that'd be closest to the street.
Well, here, here's the existing setback line and we're going, well, now saying about 12 feet.
So Cindy, your, your question, your, your suggestion that we do a special meeting that grant them the ability to lift it up immediately, what are the pros and cons? What, what could we find ourselves not liking as a result of that? We know the pros are, of course, it keeps the house out of potential water inside of it. But what would be the potential negatives to allowing them to lift it before we get these other details?
Well, well, I think that if you really need to have those other details, you do want to have a special meeting because you don't want him to allow it to continue to be vulnerable to floodwaters. The cons would be that if the setback in the front is 25 and you're going to reduce it to 12, that's a, that's a pretty significant setback issue, especially when we're talking about Park Street maybe being widened. And the city is working on a project right now to look at that, to put in sidewalks or bike paths or something to reduce the safety issues on Park Street. So those are, those are my comments about that. It's too close to the, to the waterside currently. And it hasn't really been a problem being that close. And there are a lot of other houses that are that close. And each, you got to remember that each variance is unique. And you don't really set precedence on each one. Each one is unique and you look at the circumstances for each property. They're all different. So those are my comments. I, I do like getting it out of the side yard. But again, the, the surrounding property owners all support this. So I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm not, I, I understand that, Cindy, but the thing is they said they would be willing to move it too. So if that is the case and they're willing to move some with it, I, I would suggest that we try and get it into compliance as best as we can. And if the city is trying to get something on a sidewalk, they're going to have to tear the garage out before they would do anything with the house because the garage is closer to the road than the house is. So I'm with you completely on what I'd like to see here. I'd like to try and get the house more in compliance if we can and and go from there.
Okay, then I would propose that we table it to a special meeting, maybe on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. Via Zoom.
6 o'clock. We have people that work.
Okay, 7 o'clock on Wednesday for a resubmission for additional detail. And just table it to a specific date, Tuesday or Wednesday works for the city. So you guys set what date you want. You know, I want to give them all opportunity, but I do also want to make sure that we protect an asset to the city and not just let it be destroyed by flooding.
I, I'm with you completely too. That's what I'm trying to do with them. I'm trying to get this out of the situation where the water will not affect it, but also try and get it to where we're getting closest to we can to our compliances. I agree, number one is to get it above floodplain. I don't know how much further this water is going to go up between now and the end of the year, but who knows when we get some more rain in the fall here. I don't know, but.
Well, today's paper says it's peaked and going down soon.
I know, I know. What's that, Cindy?
Or 20 years from now. 20 years from now, you don't know what's going to happen. And you don't want to invest a lot of money into something that in 20 years is going to be again underwater.
So I know, that's what I'm saying. We're both, we understand we want to have this lifted up. I'm not denying that. That's not what I'm denying. I'm denying, I'm trying, just trying to get it more compliant.
Has his hand raised and he would like to speak?
Sure, go ahead, Greg. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I, I just have to emphasize a number of things that Cindy said. Park Street's one of the busiest and I dare to say most dangerous streets right now in Sagatuck. There's people going to and from the beach at crazy speeds and all kinds of things. And there's been a lot of close calls. I understand your comment, Mr. Bott, about having to tear down the garage before the house if they want to install a bicycle path. But I respectfully disagree. Douglas has installed a bicycle path that winds in and out along the roadside going to Douglas Beach. And so if the, the city has not proposed a bike path that has to be exactly eight feet off the road already, but that a bike path may be two feet from the garage and 12 feet from the house. And I don't see the necessity of tearing down the garage because of a potential bike path as it, as it acts upon the house. So I respectfully disagree with that. I also respectfully disagree with the comment that looking at a tree with a four-foot diameter would be exactly saying, looking at a solid building with, which is fully spans the entire length of the enclosed space. There is a view from across the street, people walking along the street between the garage and, and the house that give them a nice view of the, the, the property. A nice view of Kalamazoo Lake. Having lived here for a number of years, we continue to see buildings torn down and larger buildings put up that simply block the view. There's one being built just as you come into the beautiful city of Sagatuck right now. It's going to block one more nice view coming into the city. We're trying to protect that small view in between the garage and the building. I, I honestly just common to say, to move the building back, to have us violate the setback already from a very dangerous street is not something that makes reasonable sense to me at this time. So I, I'm sorry to get those off my chest, but I, I, if you've spent any time on Park Street and you've seen the number of cars speeding by to in fact increase the danger in one part of the street, I think is a very not great idea right now. And with that, I'll stop talking. Sorry.
No, it's okay, Greg. I appreciate it. You need to let us know your feelings and everything else. If you don't, that doesn't help us either.
I will, I will end it with one last thing. The neighbors to the side where the side setback is are relatively new to Sagatuck. They've been here maybe four years. It's primarily a rental property. We have become good friends with them and thus they wrote the letter of support. We sandbagged both sides of the river today. I just would honestly try to struggle with the fact of trying to pick up and turn a building a few feet to fix a setback that is irrelevant to either property owner at this time is, is something that should be considered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The, the problem...
All right, we need to...
That, that goes with the house forever. So we're granting something in perpetuity here as long as that house is there, not as long as the two particular property owners happen to be there.
And as long as the current zoning ordinance says 10 feet, because that can change.
So what, what are we going to hear on Tuesday or Wednesday?
I think we could hear a new application from the, the architect and the property owner about how they can maybe accommodate some of your requests or not accommodate some of your requests. I think it's important to get that building out of the floodplain as soon as possible, however that be done. But we could hear a new application on Tuesday or Wednesday and you all decide and see, see if we can get a quorum and, and go on with it. But this is, this is of some urgency to get this house lifted.
Okay. All right, Cindy, appreciate that. Jim or Stephanie, then we need to make a motion to...
Let's ask, if we could, one more clarification question. I'd like to ask Charles and Greg if they can be ready to come back by next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Oh, yeah. I feel like I have to. I mean, it's like, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into these drawings, but you know, there is an urgency here and I guess I'll have to postpone. I mean, it's like I have already, next week already planned. So it's like, that's okay. You know, it's like, I, I, I think there's an urgency here and, and I will do my best to come up with a new idea. I mean, it's, I'm already working on it, as you can see.
Well, I know you are. I see that.
Could you use a little bit more time? Is getting Tuesday and Wednesday too soon for you? Do you want some more days? Would that make you feel more prepared or thorough?
No, I, you know, it's like, I, I, I don't know. The, the, the construction industry and this whole industry is just crazy right now and everybody is jumping. But you know, I, I put them at the front of the line at this point because it's like, they've been very patient with us up to this point. So I, I, you know, it's like, I will, I will make, do my best to get something to everybody. The thing is like, if, if, if you, we want to have a special meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday would probably be better. Do I need to submit drawings for everybody to review prior to that? Because that would be like Monday and this is Friday already.
If you could. The other thing, just looking at your drawing here, please make sure that your foundation is lined up with the setbacks, not the overhangs on the roof.
Yeah, it is.
Chuck, I can do everything that my possibility to make sure that we get this information to the board before the meeting. And I could do that as late as Monday or Tuesday morning.
Trying to see, this is the foundation footprint here?
Yes.
So I kind of, I do have it semi-light up at this part line here.
Great. Can I, for clarification?
Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, because this, I, I, I'm afraid, well, no, I guess we'll do the numbers. But if you're asking us to bring all of our variants closer to very busy Park Street, I don't want to waste a lot of money, what this is going to cost to redesign things for something that I ethically can't sign off on just from a safety standpoint. So, so if, my question, I guess, to the, the zoning people are if the only acceptable answer is to move the building back far enough so that the setback meets the 25-feet requirement facing the water, then we could stop right here because that, from a safety standpoint, I, I don't think is, I can't do that because it's not safe. You're putting, you're putting the back of the house too close to a very busy street. So that, we, we, there would be no point in me spending, not spending a lot of time and a bunch more money for something if that's the only acceptable answer that you would take at this point.
Can I, can I pipe in a little bit? Because I'd like to know which other properties in proximity to this one are in fact closer. It seems to me like there are houses that sit fairly close to the road. And so is, is it really an outlier or is this something that other people have been able to work around on their property? I'm just asking.
We, I don't have a particular answer for that. I can tell you the house right next to us on the right side is on the seawall. It's, it's...
Yeah, this is exist...
The, the, the house just to our right, if you talk about setbacks, the house just to our right is, is exactly on the seawall.
Is that the north side you're saying? Or when you say right, are you talking about the north or south side of the house?
Outside.
No, that, the deck is on the seawall. The house is back off the seawall, Greg.
Okay, my apologies.
I got a picture of that one. I saw that one.
Okay, my apologies, but how do you, we know how, Chuck, you had the information as far as what the setback was?
Um, as far as...
The, the house had three, that one, next one down.
This one is, this one's really close to the, to the lake.
Yes, it is.
This one almost looks like it's even right now.
It's further back.
It's further back.
Yes, we measured, I measured the distances before, but it is, it is further back. That is correct.
But it's also closer to the road.
That's the one I'm talking about. What, how, I was asking about how some of the other homes along Park Street near yours seem to sit much closer to the road than what were, were suggested today. Is that not true?
Yeah, you see here, there's two or three plus down at the bottom of the picture.
Yes, the, the one directly across the street from us is nearly on the road. But, but to increase that danger, I'm sorry, just doesn't, to justify to say that there are other places closer to the road, therefore we should move this one that direction, even though it is a dangerous road, just doesn't make sense to me. So again, I'll pose the question, I, I, which I think Jim was asking a different way, is what do you expect if we have a meeting next week?
In other words, what you're saying, Greg, nothing.
Well, what I'm saying is I can't, in my brain, justify moving the building back that far to put it in a more dangerous, and I'm sorry, Cindy's got her hand raised.
Rich, I have some studies on what the setbacks are along Park Street for a whole bunch of different properties. So I can do that without any more expense to the property owner and get you some of that information.
That, that would be fabulous if we could get more information. And Chuck, if you could come back in, in discussion with Greg on some changes that might happen and you two discuss it and we get together next, you said Chuck, Wednesday next week would work for you?
Well, I have to make it work.
Jim and Stephanie, comments on trying to table this and trying to come up with something for next week, Wednesday?
I, I could meet next week, Wednesday. It's, it's pretty clear what I'm looking for here. I'd like to hear what the proposal from, from Greg and Charles is.
Right.
I mean, this is what I'm, this is why I understand, oh, my internet's unstable. This is what I understand that we're talking about right here. This is the, the new footprint.
So am I hearing a motion?
Jim or Cindy, am I hearing a motion?
Yes.
A motion that we table this until next Wednesday at 7:00 PM and schedule a special meeting to review this and get the architect and property owner's proposals.
I second.
Okay, Cindy, we need to have a roll call on that.
Roll call. Are you ready?
We are.
Placity.
Yes, approve.
Baugh.
Yes.
Bott.
Yes.
And that is it. Motion is tabled till Wednesday at 7:00 PM via Zoom and we will meet back then. And I hope you understand that the application may be exactly the same as it is now.
Understand, Cindy.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? And I will close this part of our deliberation. Any other comments or questions that want to be said before we close the meeting? Any public comments? If there isn't any, we'll move on. Any ZBA comments, Jim or Cindy? Stephanie?
I have none.
We do have an application for appointment to fill Dick Rixey's seat and I'm looking forward to that being approved at the next council meeting.
Are you looking for more people, Cindy, or you have a name?
We have a name.
Okay.
We still need another alternate, don't we?
Nope, we have Stephanie and John.
Oh, Ludlow?
John Ludlow, yep.
Yep. Okay, okay. All right. Well, that closes that. So then I would like to adjourn the meeting as of 8:10.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Make.
A second.
And I will call the roll. Bott.
Um, yes.
Yes.
Placity.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:09 PM.
Thank you. Chuck and Greg, thank you very much and looking forward to seeing you guys next Wednesday at 7:00.